The court PM, the personnel and human services committee will come to order. We'll call, please.
Please, please.
Ryder.
Here.
Durant.
Here.
Krieger.
Yes.
Here.
What?
Here.
Eric.
Here.
Thank you. You have the minutes of July 18th, 2017. What is your pleasure?
Support.
And move and support it. All those in favor signify by the usual sign.
Aye.
Post same sign, carry. We have minutes. Public input, we give time to address the committee if you so desire. Seeing none, we'll move along. Petitions and communications. Under A, Bay County Sheriff. One, road patrol pool contracts for 2018. What is your pleasure? So move.
Support.
And move and support it. Discussion. Commissioner Begic.
I assume these are all the same that were last year and the prices are, I guess they vary by age.
That's what it says in the fact.
Basically, still the same people as before. I see.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by the usual sign. Post same sign, carry. Under two, road patrol township contracts, 2018. What is your pleasure?
So move.
Support.
And move and support it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by the usual sign. Post same sign, carry. Under the Bay County Health Officer. One, an agreement with Northeast Michigan Community Services Agency. What is your pleasure?
So move. Support.
And move and support it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by the usual sign. Post same sign, carry. We have an agreement with the Health Management Associates, re medical building consultative services. What is your pleasure? So move.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Coonan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A lot of these from the Health Department were quite interesting.
Yeah, and he's not here, so.
But I'll bet you he'll be here next Tuesday.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Because I've got some questions. And I think this is just good information for all of us to understand the programs that are ongoing and how, they all were quite interesting, whether the school program or the program that I'm interested in. It seemed like it was the new clinic. And they're getting some more money to do a study to determine who they're helping or why they're helping. That's the information that I like. And so maybe I won't ask any questions.
Okay, he did leave me a few talking points if you had. So if you hit the questions on the talking points, I could cover those.
Yeah, no.
Other than that, I'll have to defer to when Joel gets back.
We'll see him on the, I'll see him next month on the full board and we'll ask him some questions.
But yeah, if you do have, I'd have a few, you know, extras, some of the items if you did have some.
Yeah, I just think if we get four or five items and, you know, we don't work every day at the Health Department, so we're not expertise as to what you guys do. And I think you all do a good job.
Yeah.
It would be, it would be a benefit to us and the administration and the general public to know what programs are ongoing in the community. I think that's good stuff. So, but I do have some questions.
Okay.
And I'll wait till next, was that September? Okay. Thank you.
All right, yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, no, just a lot of exciting things happening and some great opportunities, so.
All right, thanks, Ms. Anderson.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by the usual sign.
Aye.
Post same sign, carry. Under three, agreement with the Bay City Public Schools, re school nurses, nursing services at Washington School.
So move. Support.
And move and support it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by the usual sign. Post same sign, carry. Under four, agreements with Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and Bay Area Network Behavioral Health Authority, re coordination of Bay Area Human Services Coordinating Council. What is your pleasure?
So move. Support.
And move and support it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by the usual sign. Post same sign, carry. Under five, business associate and data sharing agreements.
So move. Support.
And move and support it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by the usual sign. Post same sign, carry. C, Office of Criminal Defense, bids for legal representation for indigent defense at time of arraignment.
So move.
Support. And move and support it. Commissioner Coonan, or Commissioner Krieger.
Thank you. Amber, if I could, maybe you can, well, the question I have is, didn't we not put into place attorneys to help with indigent defense at the time of appearance?
Yes, I'm going to do it.
Well, my name's Kyle Chamberlain. I'm the Assistant at the Department of Criminal Defense, one of the new hires, part of that expansion. Now, what we're asking for is, all we want to do is go from the full board to get a permission to look for bids. Part of the new Michigan Indigent Defense Council standards that are coming down, all of this has been approved, these standards right now have been approved by LARA. This one is for representation at the time of arraignment. That is currently not something that our office is able to do at the staffing level we have. So what we're looking to do is ask for bids to see how much this would cost. And now, any cost that's going to be incurred by this will not be borne by the counties. What the commission did is they looked at every county's cost for indigent representation between 2010 and 2012, and then they did an average. Now, everything that's being required by every county, by the state, that goes beyond that number for that county will be picked up in full by the state. So if the state does not pay for us to eventually have new attorneys on contract to do arraignment representation, we don't have to do it. But now, the issue is if the counties don't participate in submitting compliance plans in the future, it's possible that the state would then take over for that county's indigent representation.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, so that means Mr. Schisler, who was with us in the past and fought against the movement that the board took, is in essence eligible to come back in and represent these people again?
It'll be just representation at the time of arraignment only. So while some counties are looking to head on, hire on new attorneys that will be on full time, the plan our county is looking at is just getting contract attorneys that come in just for the purposes of indigent representation at arraignment. At this point, all we're looking to do is to get the proposal from the full board, to have the request for bids, to see how much this would cost, so that we can have that cost as part of our compliance program submitted to the state as part of our requirement to comply with these standards to be the Michigan Indigent Defense Council.
Can you tell me what the two attorneys that we hired are doing right now?
Yes, I'm one of those attorneys. I represent indigent defendants who are charged with misdemeanors, and I represent them at the time after arraignment. Unless they're already a present client of mine, then I typically go at arraignment. I represent them from the point of their first pre-trial through trial or any violations of probation that come up. For this new standard, it'll be representation at the time of arraignment. So it'll be an attorney who will possibly be at the jail to interview indigent defendants who they will not vertically represent throughout the entire criminal justice process. The representation will be just for the arraignment process.
So these individuals will have contact with two different attorneys then representing them?
It all depends on what the proposal ends up being for how many attorneys we end up contracting with as a county. But they will not represent them going past. Because the standard has been approved by LARA, the standards are being approved by the state, so the part, we will have to comply with these standards that the state is requiring as for indigent defense. And standard four, which is the representation at the time of arraignment, will be one of those standards. And any future costs that incur beyond what our county is already doing will be paid for by the state. We will not have to pay for these attorneys if this ends up happening and being approved, which it looks like the process has, at this point, been proceeding and it should be what every county has to do.
And is Judge Clyda on board with this?
Well, I would just like to clarify something, if I could, for the board, because I know that you weren't involved in the process when we switched the two offices over. Just for your clarification, LARA has said the county needs to come up with a com, these are our new standards, they passed them. The county now needs to come up with a compliance plan. You need to tell us how much that compliance plan is going to cost. So one of the things LARA did is they said, "Right now, you're not required to provide representation at arraignment. We don't generally, we're not required to." Now Laura, LARA says, "Under the new guidelines, you are required to provide somebody at arraignment. You need to tell us, Bay County, what you're going to do to make that happen and how much it's going to cost. You need to provide us a proposed plan to us by X date." Okay? So what they're asking to do is simply have the board approve an RFP process so they can have that number to put in their plan. They want to be able to say, "Okay, state, you're requiring us to do this and you want to know how much it costs." The only way they can tell the state how much it's going to cost is if they go up for an RFP and get people to put in bids to say, "Yes, we can provide this service for you. This is how much it will cost." Right now, as a practical matter, if you're going to have every single defendant represented at arraignment, there is no physically possible way that the existing attorneys in the office can do that, because there are not enough hours in the day nor bodies in the office to do arraignments. Arraignments are generally non-complex matters. You show up with the defendant the first time they're in court and ask the judge to give them bond. You don't provide them with any substantive legal advice on how their case is going to go. What you're basically doing is getting them through the system so they can get set up for an appointment with the actual attorneys that's going to substantively represent them, which is who we have in our offices.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes, I was with the Oakland County Commissioners last week and they have filed a lawsuit and, you know, they've got, it's a big county, they've got like 90 lawyers in their indigent defense. And they said it's going to be a large sum of money to have them at the arraignment. So they have filed a lawsuit against LARA to try to stop this, which may change the whole process, but just informational that that's going on too.
Right. And again, this RFP process is for informational purposes only, so we have that number to give to the state. If the state looks at that proposed plan and says, "Yeah, we think that that's a great plan, we approve it," they can pay for that. If they don't pay for it, then we don't have to provide the service.
Don't have to.
It's 100% contingent upon the state paying for that service. This is not going to cost the county to provide the service.
Commissioner Harely.
And you just answered, that's the statement I was going to make. And I know in the resolution it says in there that we can do all those things, but the state doesn't pay, we don't do it.
Right.
So that's the easy answer, I think.
Right. The only purpose of this is to be able to get a number to tell the state how much it will cost.
Correct. The cost for each county to do this will be different. The cost in Duane County will be different than Bay County to Midland County. So we just need that number applied to the state.
Commissioner Lutz.
Well, two things. One, I believe, I may be wrong, but I think this is one of the things that was brought up to the board as a failure of Schisler to do when talking about Schisler's time in doing the criminal defense. Two, we can't come up with our own cost. What is it going to cost us to arraign people? We have to go out for an RFP?
If you want, if, if the county wishes to hire people, then Finance Department can come up with a cost for how much it would cost to hire people in-house. They may very well do that. What we're doing is we're submitting a proposal to the state saying, "If we have people in-house do it, this is how much it would cost. If we contract it out, this is how much it would cost." We're looking for cost to provide to the state on a proposed plan.
So you're looking for alternative cost to the cost of in-house doing it? That's why you want to propose it?
In-house has never represented arraignments. Schisler's office never represented individuals on arraignment. It's never been, it's never been the service that's been provided.
Right. But as a business, we should be able to come up with a cost, what it would be.
If we were hiring people internally, yes, we would be able to come up with that cost. I think that what the offices are trying to do is come up with the most options that will work best for the criminal defense offices, present them to the state and say, "This is how much these different options are going to cost." But we can't give them the contract cost and how much we think it will be until people actually bid on the contracts to tell us what they would be willing to do it for. We would have no way of knowing.
But we also, down the road, might want to look at, starting at, like Mr. Krieger says, with the attorneys that are going to represent that throughout the whole process, rather than having them have somebody else at arraignment and then somebody else come along later to actually represent.
That is, certainly that is something that you could consider down the line.
So. Commissioner Granger.
He's busy. I'm next.
Amber already answered my question, thank you.
Commissioner Krieger.
Thank you. So when we made, Amber, when we made the changes in the courts.
Yes.
I was under the assumption that some of that cost was going to be reimbursed to us through the state. Did that ever happen?
We have not got, at this point, no. We have not applied to the state for any reimbursement. When we did the final analysis of hiring the attorneys in-house versus having them contracted out, the difference, I believe the numbers that we provided were less than $10,000.
But I thought doing the physical changes with the office, any expense that we were going to incur would have been reimbursed.
Any expense that we incur to provide the services that the state, that LARA is requiring us to provide, if they're requiring us to, they have to pay for those.
I'm still talking about what we did a year ago with bringing on the two attorneys and not going outside. That when we put the rooms in and, you know, had the added cost of coming back in-house. So we weren't reimbursed for any of that expense?
No, that was about $10,000, including, including the build-out.
Okay.
Because the amount of money that we saved by having to refer cases out because we were in one office as opposed to two, that offset the increased cost for personnel. I believe that there was only one felony that was referred out in the last month and it's because there were four co-defendants.
So Kristin's guys did a great job in keeping the expense down, so.
They did.
That's out to you. Thank you.
Commissioner Coonan.
Thank you, sir. I think it's great that the state is requiring or working towards providing representation upon arraignment, which people never had in the past. I think that's where we were going when we approved this, so that indigent folks would have a good opportunity to have good representation. And I don't know this, but if, is there, if you're going to go up for an RFP, do they arraign every day at certain hours or that you would bring an attorney in for X amount of hours, three or four days a week? How are you going to go about doing that? Is there any rhyme or reason to how they arraign folks over there?
Well, I know they do daily custody arraignments where they have people over the video conference. So one requirement, there'd be an attorney who'd have to be at the jail to meet with the indigent defendants for anyone who claims indigency and doesn't waive their right to an attorney in arraignment. So there will be multiple moving parts in that respect.
So are you thinking that there need to be an attorney there full-time?
I don't believe we're looking at anyone full-time. I'm not completely familiar with all the particulars, the exact logistics of how we're going to make this work. I believe that's still being in discussions between.
And then you're going to be working with the court, you know, the judges and.
Yeah, I mean, I know what Judge Clyda has been in communication with both our offices and additionally our MIDC rep, Barb Komcheski, who is working with all of us to make sure that we'll be in compliance with these standards. One thing I just would like to note is, from my conversation with Barb, she did state that based on what her county has done now of all the counties she supervises, and I believe it is around 20 or so, our county has been the most compliant and providing one of the best indigent defenses so far. So these things like standard four, which we're looking to do here, are just minor tweaks to get us in complete compliance with other.
And that's why we changed and approved what we did last year, six, 18 months ago, whenever we did that, because I think we all looked at people that have no means or have very little means have the same opportunities to have good representation upon any type of an arraignment. That's why we were going there. So this is another good to me. You kind of explained what this is all about, where we're going, and I do support this.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by the usual sign. Post same sign, carry. Under D, Office of Assigned Counsel, June report, what is your receipt? Would you be in order? So move. The move's supported. Commissioner Harely.
Yeah, I just want, I'd like to tell anybody who wants to listen, I went over there yesterday to the Office of Assigned Counsel and I was talking to some of the people there. And I think, and Amber mentioned that, you know, like since January, every case that's come into the Bay County has been handled by that office except one where there were four defendants and so they could only do two of them. So two of them had to go, they had to hire somebody. That's the only time in six months, which is, what I'd say, is doing what it's supposed to do. And the secretary told me that, she says, it works, it's working very efficient. She loves what's going on there and says it's just a lot easier right now than it was before because of it all being contained in one spot. So I think it's doing what we thought it was going to do and I'm kind of happy for that. And I'm glad the people that are working that office seem to be happy and doing, doing their thing. And it's a benefit for the people of the county, you know, and the people who need that help. That's all I got.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by the usual sign. Post same sign, carry. Under personnel, E, Personnel Directors, vacancies in new positions. One, under A, 911, Central Dispatch, full-time, $15.85 an hour.
Support.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yep, I have a question. I know that we talked in the past that we were going to try to get a pool of individuals together that maybe were pre-tested, that when a vacancy were to come up, you could pull from so there wouldn't be a time lag or other people would have to carry the load. Were we able to make any progress in putting that pool together?
We have. We've had, made some really good progress with that. We actually keep a list. We're down to the end of our list right now. We're actually starting our hiring process again. But having a list of four to five, sometimes last time six people deep has helped us. And bringing folks on as full-time temporary, bringing them through the training and bringing them on as full-time as we're doing now has really helped expedite the process. We had anywhere from six to eight weeks to fill a position. Now we're able to do it as soon as we have a vacancy in our training program. Right now, we have three people in training and this person, we have someone that we're onboarding soon will make four. And this person, we're hiring full-time permanent. This individual, she's coming off of the training program in the early part of September. It's perfect timing for them to go full-time.
Super. So in other words, you and Tiffany did a good job of not having to scramble after the fact.
We have, yeah. It's helped, though.
Nice job. Thank you.
Commissioner Lutz.
I had thought we had approved several positions for 911.
We fill them full-time, temporary, and then we come back to the board when the person's made it through training for permanent.
Do you believe we still need the support?
Support.
Commissioner Begic.
Is that question on retention? I know we pumped up the salary a bit. Have retention seem to be better over the last year or so?
A little too early to tell, but I can't say that when we have this individual start full-time, we'll be at 20 individuals and three in training. So we'll be at almost full staff. So whatever. We've got a couple individuals actually who are, one has got his master's degree in social work and will be moving on shortly. Another one got his bachelor's degree. He's moving on, so we'll have some vacancies. But with the program we put in place for training and the increase in pay, it's been much easier finding more talented help. We just brought in the individual from another 911 center. She was a great hire. She'll probably come on within, a lot sooner than a normal training program. She had 12 years of experience in bringing that pay raise up or pay rate up. We wouldn't have been able to capture her without doing that, so it has helped, yes.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by the usual sign. Post same sign, carry. We have Department of Aging, Case Management Worker, full-time, $39,145.60.
So move.
Support. And move and support it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by the usual sign. Post same sign, carry. Under C, Equalization Department, Senior Appraiser, full-time, $46,883.
So move. Support.
And move and support it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by the usual sign. Post same sign, carry. Health Department, Family Planning Clinic, Public Health Nurse, full-time.
So move. Support.
And move and support it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by the usual sign. Post same sign, carry. We have a new position, Health Department, Washington School, Public Health Nurse, full-time.
So move. Support.
And move and support it. Commissioner Coonan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It looked like that, even though that's a new position, the dollars are already located in that particular area, so it's not going to be any additional cost to budget.
Good program, I believe.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Lutz.
Yeah, how are we doing with retention nurses since we changed their schedules?
The retention nurses, that's kind of, they retire. By the way, Grant said it earlier, Melissa Mayla, the Marie's Preparedness and Health Education Division Manager of the Bay County Health Department, filling in for Joel Stroud today. But I think we're doing good, but just life has happened with the last couple. So I know we had a retirement and then with this family planning, a nurse took, internally had taken that position, but now she is seeking another opportunity at a hospital and she's also furthering her education. So that was kind of more of her personal choice. I don't think that was a retention thing per se with the money or whatever, but.
Okay.
But other than that, I know we had a new nurse that started right now temporarily on Monday to fill in for all nurses out on some medical leave. And I think the hopes is that she'll eventually be a permanent employee once, so she's awesome so far. It's only day two, but.
And I would say similar to what Chris spoke about with dispatchers, this particular nurse, she's had many years of experience in a public health department forum and we may not have been able to recruit, had those changes.
True. She might have sought employment elsewhere, but, because I think we're able to somewhat compensate at around the same level, so.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by the usual sign. Post same sign, carry. Any referrals, unfinished business, new business, miscellaneous announcements? Yes, Commissioner Harely.
This Sunday, August 20th, at Central High School Football Field, there's a football camp for kids from 12 to 4 p.m. And it's for grades three to six. And there's a T-shirt and a late lunch, you know, provided to all the participants. And it's limited to the first 200 participants, but I know there's still openings. Big word is it's free and the kids will have a good time, so 12 to 4 on Sunday. Everybody likes free. That's all I got.
Move to a chair. And move and support it. All in favor signify by the usual sign. Post same sign, carry.
I'd like to call the Art of the Bay County Board of Commissioner meeting, August 15th, 3:30 p.m. Please take the roll.
Durant.
Here.
Krieger.
Yes.
Begic.
Here.
Coonan.
Here.
Ryder.
Here.
Lutz.
Here.
Eric.
Here.
All members present.
Let's stand for invocation.
Heavenly Father, we come before you this afternoon thanking you for the guidance and understanding that you have given this Board of Commissioners. Lord, we ask again today for your help and direction to carry on and do the work that has been placed by this commission before them in office. May your divine providence help everyone to benefit. The citizens of this community in your holy name we ask this, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our umbrella, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda will be the citizen input. If there's anyone who'd like to speak to the Board of Commissioners, now it'd be time to step forward.
I was waiting for somebody else to go first. Pardon the glasses.
Please state your name.
Yes, my name is Cindy Kowalski. I'm the clerk at Monitor Township.
Okay, thank you.
I- I prepared a written comment that I'm pretty much going to stick to. I wanna start out by saying, though, that I really agonized about coming to the meeting Any statements I make, it's all in the best interests of the taxpayers of Monitor Township, and means no disrespect at all for the county commission. So, with that said, good afternoon. I would like to speak regarding the proposed ballot question for the Bay Medical Care Facility milage renewal. As you are aware, townships generally do not have elections in odd calendar years. If special elections are called by an entity outside our municipality, then all expenses incurred to conduct that election become reimbursable costs. The preparations for an election start approximately two and a half months before Election Day, with the printing and mailing of absentee voter applications to our permanent absentee voters. For larger jurisdictions like Hampton, Bangor, and Monitor Townships, this cost alone will be approximately one thousand dollars for each township, not counting the time to prepare the applications for mailing. Training sessions will also need to be conducted for all election inspectors on the new voting equipment we have received. Though the vendor ESNS has assured us they will conduct these training sessions, there is still the cost to compensate our inspectors for attending the training. There will be preparation and mailing costs for the ballots requested by absentee voters, pre-election equipment and software testing, publication of public accuracy test notices, wages to be opened the Saturday before the election, as required by law, the purchase of special election instructions and secrecy sleeves, and any other additional supply and material costs needed to conduct the election. There are also costs involved to set up the precincts prior to Election Day, election inspector wages for Election Day, and transportation of election equipment after the election. The rough estimate for Monitor Township alone to conduct this special election will be over six thousand dollars. When you include the other thirteen townships in Bay County, you could be looking at a cost exceeding sixty-five thousand. The county will also incur the cost to print all ballots and test decks, to purchase the precinct kits for each township and Count AV County Board, and pay for the programming of the election software for the voting tabulators and voter assistance terminals. If, on the other hand, this proposal is placed on the August two thousand and eighteen primary, these costs will all be paid by the state with no cost to the county. Thank you very much for your time.
Second, ma'am?
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan? Did you ask a question for him?
Is there a reason, Mike, that you can respond to that particular question as to why it has to be, maybe there's a reason?
You know, I just think that something, I mean, I know there's always extenuating circumstances that we all don't know.
Well, we really wanted that, if we don't allow in November two thousand and seventeen, yeah, we'll get August two thousand and eighteen, we're gonna log that, that as a result, with the big milage, and that we'll second up all, we'll have our full year about three-quarters of milage operating funds, and we're in the middle of a capital project, as you all know, that funding here is important for us to receive.
Okay, yeah, like I said, I know there's always extenuating circumstances. I just wanted to really, we have this election, I wanna have a rational answer for when my voters come in as to why we're having this election. Thank you.
Commissioner Biggik?
I know there's a city, there'll be a city election then, so that, that'll take the city out of it, and I guess there's a possibility of the senate seat being up, and I don't know if they would get it on the ballot, I might ask our clerk that question, but if, if the special election was held for the senate, would that, would that be in November, or would they have to push that back later? Is it too late for that to go on?
We're beyond some of the deadlines, yes.
Yeah, 'cause that, that would be the only other one I know of that might, might be on the ballot. That'd be a county-wide.
Anyone else?
Mr. Burson?
Yeah, Mike, I'm still confused, I just glanced at the, you know, the resolution. Is the three-quarters of mil, is that new milage, or is that renewal?
It's renewal.
It's renewal.
It hasn't expired until the five-year, no, it's over that, five years ago. About the election, as I mentioned earlier, you go one year without the milage, one year to see, it's a, it's a people should have renewal, but it is currently renewal.
Yeah, once it expires, then it'll be new. But, when you read the ballot language, it doesn't seem to sound like a renewal, to me, but.
Well, the first sentence, it says continuation.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Coonan?
Mike, how long has that milage been applied to the care facility?
I expect around for thirty-plus years.
And that's for operation?
Yeah.
And that's for operation to subsidize or to supplement, to pay for insurance and medical?
Right, it's, like, it's, it's been there for thirty years, and it's been there to help subsidize Medicare, Medicaid, and private insurance that we receive on our residents, and it comes in handy because we don't really know what Medicaid would be paying us sometimes, and Medicare, and particularly going on into the future, they're going to have a new way of reimbursing us, fee-for-service, and it's not gonna be on a cost reimbursement basis, so we could end up actually receiving less revenues in the future, because on a fee-for-service basis, and that's going to probably happen within the next three to four years. Right now, they have certain test sites throughout the state, and they're trying to iron out the, the issues with that, so to have a continuation of our milage would be very important to provide the services that we need to offer to our residents.
And three-quarters of a mil generates how many dollars?
Uh, about two point, about two million seventy thousand.
Commissioner Lutz?
Are we in item A, or?
Not yet, no.
Okay, so do we wait to?
Do you have a comment? You make a comment? I have this question.
Mike?
About this comment, yeah.
You have a comment you'd like to make?
No, I do.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
When you're ready.
Clerk?
The way this question is worded, it's for a six-year period of time, so this election will not fall within a special timeframe in the future. It won't fall where it expires in an even year again. They will in the future beyond the regular ballot cycle.
Commissioner Biggik?
I think what, February, May, August, November are the ones that are sort of designated, so if it didn't go in November, say, maybe we'd have a senate primary in February, which would be county-wide, or May.
The February election's been eliminated, so now our election days are May, August, and November, and the particular election that you're talking about, Commissioner Biggik, is subject to the call of the governor, so he could tell us in two weeks we need to do this, or in two months. It can be over and above any of those election days on the normal schedule, so, and I don't think they're in a position to wait for that to be determined. They need to be ready to collect with the next cycle. It's just unfortunate how it fell in the election year. And this will give us an opportunity to test our new equipment county-wide, so it will, with one ballot question, test our, test our new system county-wide in November, so we will be ready for next year.
Commissioner Coonan?
Yes, I think you'll say.
Thank you.
It sounds like you are the clerk of Monitor. Now, have you, did you talk with county clerk in regards to training and some of the concerns that you have?
We'll have to work all that out.
I asked you, did you talk to county clerk in, in regards to some of the questions that you had?
No, I have not.
Okay.
I just haven't, I just haven't.
And she seems to be, to me, because this is all good with me, she seems to be confident that the train, it would give a good opportunity to test the new equipment, so that should not pose as a problem for this particular question you're going about, either the county clerk or this.
If I could respond to that, though, Commissioner? The thing that is, so.
Ma'am, please, that, because it's, thank you, thank you.
The, the concern that I have is, is two-part. Number one, the election inspectors aren't really expecting to have to work on an odd year election, and so a lot of them make plans to take their trips, and a lot, and November's always harder, because a lot of them become snowbirds, less people to work. Now, granted, this will be one proposal, and I'm hoping then that we can consolidate precincts to help save costs and reduce the number of workers that are needed, but we also run into the problem of, in Monitor's case, I use two different schools as polling locations. Now, they've set, if they know far enough in advance, when they set their school calendar for the coming school year, they purposely schedule in-service days for Election Day because of security concerns that they have with having the voters coming in and out of the schools while they have students in session. So, yes, it's, it's nice to run an easy election, but that doesn't mean whether it's in, in one-proposal election, or it's a state primary, it's all the same steps, all the same timeline, all the, you know, the, the time involved doesn't diminish. So, that was part of the, part of the concerns that I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak? Seeing no one, we'll move on to items for consideration. A, Bay Medical Care Facility Milage Question for Inclusion on the November seventh, two thousand and seventeen, Election Ballot Resolution Number Two Thousand Seventeen dash one-seventy. Some move?
Sorry.
Discussion. Commissioner Lutz?
Let me interject one thing first. On the resolve part, we're gonna take it out as the, after the word "that," subject to the approval of the County Election Scheduling Committee, so the end of the first line will be coming out as part of the question, on that, on the resolution. So, the, the only word that stays is "that" on the line, and the rest of it will be out. No, Commissioner Lutz, I'm sorry.
Well, I guess what, whatever they came to is why we didn't have it for the August primary this year. Instead of wanting to, we pushed to get it done earlier in the year, when we get out of the election.
Yeah, the reason was is that it kinda fell off the radar for the facility, we were talking about it, then other issues came about, and next thing we knew that we missed the August, and so if it wasn't for Cindy, the county clerk, identifying that we need to have the proposed language certified by her by this afternoon at four o'clock, we would've missed this one also, so it was just an oversight by the facility.
And the August election wasn't county-wide either, so it wouldn't have mattered August or November, Commissioner Lutz, 'cause August wasn't at a county-wide election either.
Okay.
And the care facility is paying the cost. It's, they will be reimbursing the townships and the county for their expenses.
Anyone else? Seeing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose?
Aye.
Motion carries. B, Bay County Share of Cops and School Service Agreement, Resolution Number Two Thousand Seventeen dash one-seventy-one.
Some move.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion carries. C, Correction on the Appointment to the Bay County Board of Campusers, Resolution Number Two Thousand Seventeen dash one-seventy-two.
Some move.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business? Any new business? Commissioner Lutz?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in the last day, I received a letter from Dana Muscat, the city manager of City of Bay City, who has told us that Steve King is their suggested person to fill in for Richard Finn, a former city manager. So, at this time, at the last meeting, we didn't have this information, and we put it off to the next meeting, but we will be having a land bank meeting soon, and I'd like to support Steve King and promote Steve King as the replacement for Rich Finn on the land bank.
That's a motion?
Yes.
Support.
And, and that would be for the balance of his, of Rick Finn's term, and then in October, we would have to either reappoint Rick Finn, or whoever else the city brings forward at that point.
Okay. What else? Okay, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion carries.
That's all I have.
Okay, miscellaneous. Announcements?
Yes? I don't know if you wanna talk about my trip now or later, but maybe I'll do it now. I was in Washington, D.C. a week ago, and I think the key thing is we got to meet with this Department of Intergovernmental Cooperation, I'm not sure if this is a new department with the new president, or they have one before, but we got to meet with fourteen different departments, and we got to meet with Betsy DeVos, Department of Education, we had Linda McMahon from Small Business Administration, NASA, Department of Transportation, VA, FEMA, I thanked them for getting us the money, I know that that had just come through, so they gave us all contact numbers to reach, go to them if we have any questions for any of those departments, so I think that was one of the key things, is to put a name and a face together with the department, and so I think it was a good, good time with that. We had about fifty commissioners there, got a tour of the White House right before that, but it was a five-hour meeting with fourteen different departments, so we got a lot of information, and a lot of them talked about what they do in Michigan, you know, what their specific role in Michigan, and what jobs they had, and what departments. We, we heard about the Michigan State, the, the Linear Accelerator, it's a, it's a multi-billion-dollar project, it's supposed to be, you know, state-of-the-art for treatment for cancer treatment, and other things too, so it's sort of interesting that they keyed it to what they do in Michigan, so I think it was worthwhile.
Glad you had a good talk, Mr. Duranchak.
I also received from, because of Mr. Biggik's going to the meeting, I'm sure we all did emails for contact people in Michigan that, you know, had, are, you know, to do with the, in our, you know, communication with all these different departments, which is nice, too, so now you can.
Sounds like, sounds like it was a good trip.
It was worthwhile, yes.
All right. Anyone else? Any more announcements? Nope. Close session then?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Motion carries, always in order.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Got it, Jim.